To the Candidate Forum of the Board of Light and Power and City Commission for 2015, sponsored by the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. We really appreciate all eight candidates for both positions coming out this evening to be able to share with the community who they are, and we really appreciate the community coming out to find out more about who's running in their local election. All politics are local, and it's really important. You all have a lot of say in this. Because it's not a big election year, it's really easy to overlook that we have a vote coming up next Tuesday, and there's also not a lot of signs out. So, we're really happy that we could bring you this opportunity to get to know your candidates. The purpose behind this forum was to get everybody to know, not only who's running, but to start building bridges across municipal borders. You know, if there were more municipalities running, we would try and have more of them at the same table. This year, it happens to be City Commission and Board of Light and Power that have positions available, so we've invited both of them to sit at the same table. We started planning this back in August, and so, you know, it wasn't because of any recent issues in the news. It was originally, we wanted to be able to have the Board of Light and Power and Marquette City Commission having the same amount of time and being in the public together, because oftentimes, one will overshadow. Everybody will seem to watch the City Commission Candidate Forum and not pay as much attention to whether it's the Board of Light and Power, or Marquette Township, or Chocley Township. So, our goal is really to start bringing the conversation together. Everybody gets the chance to see who's running, as well as the candidates get to see who they will be serving with, should they be elected. And it gets the conversation moving. So, we appreciate everybody sitting down together. The format of the forum, we only have ninety minutes. Each candidate will have about ten minutes to speak, and we have four pre-arranged questions that are broad, that fit really for candidates in any position or any experience level. We did not want to play a game of gotcha. We did not want to play a game of who has more experience on specific issues, so that they could weigh in, and everybody else looks like they're just not quite sure. So, all of our questions are very broad in scope, so you get an idea of who the person is, and, you know, the subjects that they choose to talk about within the broad scope tell just as much about the person as their thoughts on the subject specifically. We will have an opening. Each candidate will be able to speak two minutes with an opening statement, four questions, one minute answers per question, and two minutes for a closing statement. For the candidates, I will be holding up an orange sheet when you're at thirty seconds and a red sheet when your time is up. We're not strict. We're not going to cut off your mic when the time is up. No penalizations will occur, but, you know, just try and be mindful of everybody's time. Before we came together here, we had drawn straws in the back at random on who will start, so randomly, we'll have someone start, and the questions or the answers will go to their right and move through the group. And at that, we're going to start off with introductions and opening statements. You'll have two minutes. And according to the straws, we have started with Jason Zedunik. Jason, please remind me your spot.
Zedunik.
Zedunik, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason, and thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. It's an honor to have the opportunity to be a member of the Marquette City Commission. I am running for seats, and again, I thank all of you for your interest in the political process. Thank you to Jason for taking the time to organize this opportunity here. I think it's fantastic for everyone to get a brief opportunity to come in front of you to give a little bit of a background about ourselves and where we stand and a few of the issues moving forward. A little bit about myself, I know we're a little short on time, and so, I'll try to keep it short. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Marquette, really love the community, and that really is the genius for why I'm running. Really, it's been a fantastic community. My wife and I have chosen to stay here, and we want to continue to make this a community that people want to stay in and live in, and be proud of where we're at. Everywhere I go, throughout the state, throughout the region, whenever I have friends that come to the city of Marquette and visit us, everyone has always really can't say enough positive things about the community. I'm really excited about working towards continuing that process. I graduated from Marquette Senior High School back in nineteen ninety-nine. I was fortunate enough to continue and graduate from Northern Michigan University. Subsequent to that, I've done a couple of different things. I've been a teacher. I've worked in the banking industry, the nonprofit sector, and I've been with the State of Michigan for several years now. I, again, really excited about the opportunity to join in the team up here, looking at a variety of the different goals that we have and working towards achieving those goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Meredith.
Hi there. My name is Meredith Lyons. I am running for City Commission, and I have lived in Marquette for thirty years. I've moved away a couple of times, and I keep coming back. I am running for Commission because I really would like to be more involved in my community in a different way than what I have been doing. I'm a licensed massage therapist. I've been practicing massage for eleven years, and just recently purchased my first home, and which has a lot of issues in itself, just being a homeowner, but I also would like to know where my tax money is going and how it's being spent, and I'd like to be a part of continuing to make Marquette a great area. And that's it. Thank you.
Mike Ford.
I'm Mike Ford, and I'm a lifelong resident of Marquette. I wasn't born here, but my wife and I built our life here in this community. We have lived in Marquette for over forty years, raised our children here, and now we're raising our grandchildren here. At least, we're helping to raise them anyway, and grandparents know what that means. And so, it's important to us. It's very important to me, and I've been involved in a lot of different ways, basically, kind of on the sidelines in some ways, in city politics. I follow city politics continuously every day, talk to people in office and find out what's going on. Right now, in Marquette, the future is now, and there's been some great work done in the city of Marquette by the City Commission, by the Board of Light and Power, by a lot of people in this town. There's some fantastic volunteers in this town, and everybody that knows anything about the city of Marquette knows what's been done, and Marquette couldn't be done without the volunteers that have done what they've done. And the future is also fifty years from now, and we need to keep this going, and we need to keep the great things that are happening in Marquette continuing, and we need to keep it going seamlessly, and that's why I was very, very happy to hear that Mike Angeli was made City Manager, because it's to be just about as smooth as it can be, in my opinion. I worked thirty-one years in the Michigan Department of Corrections, and I'm retired from there. If you recognize my voice at all, you know that I work with Walt Lindell on the radio now in the morning. That's kind of a hobby, in a sense. Basically, I am retired. My wife Rosemary worked with Marquette Area Public Schools for over twenty-five years. She was a secretary at Whitman Schools for quite a while, and then she moved over to the central office, and she's retired now as well. And as I mentioned, we're both kind of spending a lot of time with our grandchildren and doing a lot of things around town, and we still want to keep things going the way they really are going. They're going well. This town is vibrant. It's doing really well, and that's why I want to be involved.
Thank you. Down to the other end.
Good evening. My name is Ken Wunder. I am a resident of Marquette, seventy-seven years old. I've been here all my life. I was employed by the Marquette Board of Light and Power for thirty years, starting in nineteen sixty-two as an sailor, at a ripe old wages of ninety-six cents an hour. I moved on through there, working up to different positions, or the diesel plant operator, a diesel hydro plant operator, and in nineteen sixty-seven, I moved over to the Shira Steam Plant, where I was fortunate enough to become the first operator to roll unit number one. I rolled out unit number two for the first time. I ended up going to ICS course, became a stationary engineer, and progressed on up to be the senior shift operator for twenty-five years. I'm a member of Saint Christopher Parish Catholic Church. I served on his council for two years, and I'm also a member of the Marquette Els Lodge. I've been a four oh five, been there for forty-two years. I have done several positions, graduating up throughout Exalted Ruler, went into Grand Lodge and became the District Deputy Grand Exalted Ruler. And I've got plenty of time to get on different positions now, and I thought, because of my experience of being on the board for six years before, my experience would be beneficial to why I'm running again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Dave?
Good evening. My name is Dave Puskala. I'm originally from Iron River, graduated in nineteen eighty-five. I've been living in Marquette since nineteen ninety-one. My wife Carol and I have been married for twenty-five years. We have four kids. One is in college, two in high school, and our youngest is in seventh grade. Graduated from Michigan Tech with an electrical engineering degree with a utility background. There's different options in electrical engineering. Mine was power utility engineering. Started my career with Wisconsin Power and Light down in Madison, Wisconsin, and also in Lake Geneva for a short time. Returned to the UP to work with Upco, and that was when the Elfment Project was in full swing, and I worked with Upco to mitigate the impacts of that Elf project on the Upco distribution system. My wife and I really love the UP. We love Marquette, and there's probably a number of places I would consider living in the UP, but Marquette by far is the best place to live, I believe, in the UP. There's a lot of progressive thinking. It's somewhat of a miniature melting pot in terms of a lot of outside influences with the university, with the hospital, and even with people from other parts of the UP. You know, I've got lots of friends in town that, you know, they're not originally from Marquette, but they've been here a long time because of what the city has to offer. And now, it's, we all go through stages in life, and I'm sort of getting out of that really busy with my kid stage, even though that hasn't quite subsided, and getting more into, back into serving, you know, the public and keep doing my part to keep the city of Marquette moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Erby, and I am a candidate for the Board of Light and Power. I think I want to start off and say that someone in the audience is very important to me and has supported me through the years for whatever I've done. That's my wife Karen. She's in attendance tonight. We have three lovely daughters and eight grandkids who just are the best, so we're very fortunate and very blessed. I started, actually, my career of public service in the city of Marquette the time many years ago, when I started Project Graduation, the all-night high school party for the kids, the lock-in, and I take great pride in that because of the fact that we have no, had no accidents and no tragedies, you know, for twenty-seven years. But that's the public coming together. That's, you know, you start something, and the public needs to come together to support it, and they've done a great job of doing that to parents through the years. From the other side, I've been involved in aging services. I'm the past chairman of the County Commission on Aging. I now sit on the State Aging Services Commission, appointed by the governor, Snyder, and take great pride in what we've been able to accomplish throughout the state, and I always kiddingly focus on my neck of the woods here in the Upper Peninsula, and I take great pride in that, and that reflects back to the city of Marquette. I retired a few years ago from the financial service industry, and I was there for thirty years and learned a lot about money and how money works and how budgets work, and that's been very helpful through the years, because from that point, I was able to serve in city government with the commission. I had six years, and almost four years of that was as mayor, and I take great pride in what we were able to accomplish in that four-year period of time. I am a member of Kiwanis, the Elks, the American Legion, and it could go on and on and on, but my time is up, so thank you very much.
Thank you. John?
Good evening. My name's John Brahms. I'm born, raised here in Marquette. I graduated from Marquette Senior High School in nineteen eighty-four. I was in the military, in the Army, for twenty-five years. We retired. My wife and two kids moved back to Marquette three years ago. Since then, we've been, after traveling around the world, we decided to come back to Marquette where I was born and raise and want to raise our children here. Marquette's where I've always called home, and decided it would be a good transition to provide public service, such as I haven't done since leaving the military. And I thought the Board of Light and Power provides critical infrastructure and the utility that you really can't live without, so I decided that serving on the board would be a good opportunity to provide direction to the board and provide what's needed for everybody to live their lives, basically. And that's all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Thanks to the chamber for organizing this. My name is Sarah Kimbenzie, and I am a lifelong resident, born and raised in Marquette, Michigan. I work for the public schools. I'm the director of adult and community education, and I also took on another big role this year, and that is the director of grant writing, so I'm looking at ways to actually be innovative and help the public schools bring in some more money besides their FTE accounts. It's another challenge, I guess, I would put in my head at this time in my life. I went to Northern Michigan University, my undergraduate degree. I have a bachelor's in education. I continued on, and I got a master's in public administration, and I'm currently looking to start PhD very part-time in environmental and energy policy at Michigan Tech. I have served as a planning commissioner, mostly due to my experience growing up, working with my dad, who has his own business, land surveying and engineering business, and coming into City Hall and being around the government aspect of what a business does to interact with its government. From the Planning Commission, I was an elected member of the Marquette City Charter Commission, and now I'm a City Commissioner, serving my first term and up for reelection. Why I'm running for reelection, why I have always been part of city government, is because I truly believe it's one of the most important jobs that someone can do, whether you're elected, appointed, or attending meetings and actually being a part of the conversation and the solutions going forward. I think it provides anyone experience to work with a diverse group of people that all care very deeply about their community, and they're all working together to find those solutions that sometimes aren't very easy to find. I think that there, I think it's great that there's three other people that want to do this job, and a lot of times, it can look like it's a very thankful job, but I assure you, it is very rewarding. I wish the three candidates to my right the best of luck.
Thank you all for the introductions. We're going to move into the pre-selected questions. These questions came from talking to many chamber members, community members around, and again, they're as broad as they can be, so that both organizations have the opportunity to find answers within it. So, in drawing straws, Sarah Kimbenzie drew the short straw to start on the first question, and that is, what do you like most about Marquette and why?
Well, I think, like Meredith said, being from the area, growing up here, leaving a few times, but always coming back, there is something that has a continual draw here. I think that's first and foremost, the people, and it's the people that are involved, the people that really want to come together and make a difference and step up and do some of the hard work. I think Marquette sets itself apart, not only from other cities in the UP, but also other cities in the entire state of Michigan and the region. We get many accolades. We have people doing great work, whether it's recreation, you know, with our business sector. We also have a lot of challenges, and we have a lot of challenges that they need to be solved, and they need to be solved with innovation and creativeness. I think that's first and foremost what I like about the area, is that everyone does come together to do that.
Thank you. And moving to the right, Jason.
This is an easy question for me to answer. It's, Marquette is a fantastic community, and the best thing that I like about Marquette is it's a great place to raise a family. It's where my wife and I have chosen to raise our two boys. Why have we chosen to stay here? We have great schools, you know, thank you to all those at the Marquette Area Public Schools for the jobs that they do, for the continued success that our schools have. I can't say enough how important that was to us. In addition, Marquette is a safe community. I think it's a fantastic aspect that we have as a community, where I'm not worried about my children playing around in their neighborhood. I'm not terribly concerned about locking our doors. Those are all very important things when we looked at where to be, and again, we looked at this area for a reason. Additionally, Marquette is a community on the rise. Marquette is doing a lot of great things. They've done a lot of fantastic things, and I look forward to being a part of the excellent things that are both currently in the works, as well as the things that I would like to accomplish. Thank you.
Meredith?
When I moved away from Marquette, I graduated from Northern Michigan University in two thousand and one, and I relocated down to Metro Detroit, Royal Oak area, and I lived there for three years, and I couldn't wait to try to get back up here, and so, I was able to do so, and it's been challenging just trying to start over, and I'm really happy to be back up here. It's a safe place to live. Like Sarah had said, there are challenges as well. I just, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to be up here and to be involved in the community. It's a gorgeous place. I can't wait to get back up into the UP when I have to travel downstate, and I think this area has a lot to offer. When I moved here in eighty-five, there weren't too many businesses, not too many different types of, oh, sorry. Okay. Well, anyway, yeah, I'm just really happy to be up here, and I appreciate you guys being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
This community is alive. This community is alive. There's a lot of vibrancy to this community. There's a lot of vibration that happens with this community, and as has been said, and isn't it great to have candidates for an election that have great things to say about the offices they're looking for? And that's a great thing, and I think that's a thing that speaks of the life in the city of Marquette and around the UP in general. You know, there's great things going on, and I've talked to a lot of people coming into the city this summer, and the city looked fantastic. And how many things do we have going on all summer long? We have things going on in this city that people look forward to all year round, that a lot of people have done a lot of great work with, and that's one of the reasons why my wife and I love living in Marquette, and our children love living here. My son doesn't live here now, but he comes back every chance he gets, brings his children, and we raise, like Sarah, we have grandchildren here, and that's one of the reasons why we love this city, because it's alive.
Thank you. Ken?
When you get to be seventy-seven years old, and you've looked around Marquette as long as I have, and you see the changes that have come from back fifty-six years ago, I remember when I went to Navy, I swore I was never going to come back to Marquette. And boy, when I got my four years in, you couldn't see me get back here quicker. I took the first plane I could, and haven't left here since. The city of Marquette has grown so much, and to see the new hospital going to be built now, the different places that have changed from the old western days when we were out there skating, playing hockey and et cetera. Sports is available to all our citizens, and it's nice to raise a family here, where you can watch your son go to college, your grandsons go to college, and keep on going to see how things go. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
So, just to reiterate the question, it's, what do you like most about Marquette and why? And I would agree with everything that's been said so far. What I would like to focus on, though, is the forward-thinking leadership that the city has seen. I think that Marquette is unique in that it has a lot of things to its advantage, and those advantages haven't been wasted, because the leaders in the city, the citizens in the city, have chosen to keep moving forward and not necessarily hold on to the past, and that has really created a lot of the things that we've talked about up here tonight, that vibrant community, that safe community, a community with great schools, great businesses, you know, there's just about everything you could want in a very relatively small community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
I believe that the first thing that is important and stands out in Marquette is its citizens. We have a very diverse population. You have an older population, you have the young, under forty group, you have energy in this city that just keeps going, that supports the city function. They're here to enjoy our fresh water, our beautiful vista. The things that make us important, a lot of them are recreational activity, our trails, downhill skiing, cross-country skiing. These activities, you can't find another, you know, this is a community that has it all. I mean, when you look at the ski hill, you look at the trail system that has been put in by a lot of dedicated people, it's huge. But it's also a place where you can take a safe walk at night. You can take your wife, and you can walk the bike paths, feel comfortable that you're not going to be assaulted. We have a great police department, fire department, public works department that make it livable that we're here, and it's just a, and I do, for one friend of mine, we have an international airport, so it's available to us, and so, we've got a lot of activity here.
Thank you, Jerry.
And it's a very vibrant, as was said, community. It's going to continue to grow.
Jerry.
It's going to be very good. Thank you.
Time. Thank you. John?
I think probably, as has been said before, the quality of life is probably the largest factor in Marquette that I like the most. We probably could have lived other places if we had wanted to after leaving the service. Used to live in a big city like Washington, DC, and chose to come home, and actually, my wife had as much to say about it as I did, you know, after living where she did in Texas and around the world, Marquette was the place we chose to live, and I think that the safe, clean, good environment, it still has a small-town appeal, but in a way, it has a cosmopolitan atmosphere, where you can go to restaurants from around the world, different types of restaurants that reflect other types of cuisine breweries, I mean, good schools and good universities, so, you know, I think quality of life is the bottom line, and serving in the BLP would help maintain that.
Thank you. The next question, the second question, gives you all the opportunity to become much more specific, both to the positions that you're running for and to your views. The question is, describing your view, the best possible future for Marquette. And according to drawing straws, we start with John.
Probably the best possible future would be one where the economy is strong enough that anybody that wishes to have a good-paying job that anybody that wishes to have a good-paying job can achieve that, and that the basic requirements of life, like food, water, electricity, are all available, and that people can have a safe place for the kids to go to school. I mean, everybody seems universally wants a lot of the same things, but, you know, life isn't always perfect, but I think we can all achieve progress if we promote a good place to live, and I hope we'll be part of the answer, part of the solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Sarah.
Okay. I think the best possible future for Marquette is making sure that we get everyone involved. I think sometimes there's a disconnect where we feel that people make decisions for us, those on the commission, those on the Board of Light and Power, and we're not involved. I would like to challenge the community to actually get more involved and actually be part of our discussions, because to me, that's going to make the biggest difference going forward. There are a lot of challenges. We have less state revenue coming in, we have infrastructure that needs to be fixed. We need to look more at public-private partnerships and work better with our neighbors with recreation, our marinas and everything, but by coming together and having those conversations and drawing from a diverse group of people in our community that have varying backgrounds, varying levels of expertise, that's how we're going to make the best possible solutions come to reality and continue to push Marquette forward.
Thank you. Jason?
The best possible future for Marquette, and one that is important to my wife and I, is to have the opportunity for our two sons to be able to continue to live here in the city and want to be a part of Marquette. And I think if they want to be a part of the community, and they're interested in being a part of the community, that means we're doing the right things. How are we going to do that? I really look at the wonderful opportunities and resources that the city of Marquette has all around us, our natural resources. Let's leverage those. Let's utilize some of the excellent things that have already been done. I've read the Smart Zone Plan, took the time to read that lengthy document. Let's use those types of things and advantages that we have within the city to attract growth, to attract new people that want to become a part of our community. So again, we have that vibrant community, that excellent economic opportunity for those that are available, that want to stay here. And I think that when we look at those that want to stay and be a part of our community, again, I think that leveraging those resources, utilizing those opportunities, I think that's important. Also, I think it's very important, a couple mentioned, to leverage our partnerships, both state and federal partnerships. Let's continue to get them involved as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
I think it's vital that the area continues to have more opportunities for people to work and to stay. And I think it's great that we have a community that embraces the idea of volunteerism, and I just really, I think it's terrific that there's just, it's a nice knit community, a small knit community that really would like to just continue to stay involved and know what's going on in the area. And I think what's really important for the future of Marquette is to have relationships with other areas, downstate perhaps, Minnesota, Wisconsin, to have the opportunities to bring more business in, and I just, I think that's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Part of the city commission's job is to do business, and there's a lot of business to do left in the city of Marquette, and there's going to be a lot of business to do in the future. Things have gone really well, but there's still a lot of work to do yet. The hospital project is not complete. I'm not entirely sure that the Board of Light and Power project is complete. There's the Lake Shore Boulevard, there's that issue that needs to be taken care of. A lot of people like to use Prescott. As a matter of fact, you all know, and I know, that when people come to the city of Marquette, one of the first places they want to go to is Prescott. They have to be able to get there, and that means year-round. So we have to find a way to fix Lake Shore Boulevard. We have to find a way to develop the brownfield area and bring more money into the city of Marquette. And I like the idea of bringing more federal government and more state money into the city of Marquette, and I'd like to find more creative ways to do that. The more money we can bring here, the more we can do.
Great. Thank you.
One of the things I've noticed that's really improved a lot is I have seen where our fire departments and police departments have expanded where they work jointly with call-outs and emergencies. It is of the utmost importance that Marquette, as it expands, works with the townships and keeps an accurate run between the two different boards, like the Chalkley Township or the different areas. It's hard to watch and sit back and not see expansion growing strictly on the west end of the county and not in the city itself. Yes, we're gaining as far as the downtown area, but for expansions and good workforce and jobs for the younger people, I don't see anything coming in. Argonix was the last one in Marquette, and when we asked for a tax relief, we said no. And what did they do? They moved out. My time's up.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know that I know what the best possible future for Marquette is, but the way we get there, I believe, is that we have to continue to look for ways to promote our strengths. And along with that, we need to keep the community livable in terms of keeping costs under control, taxes under control, while at the same time, making sure we have a great school system. We need to make sure that we continue to promote business within the city, and those sorts of things are the way that we'll get to whatever that future is. It's really tough to predict, it's, you know, changes all the time. But the way for us to get there is to continue to focus on how can Marquette move itself into the future with continued progressive leadership and solid leadership and thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
I'm not going to say much for the next question, so I can put some little time on this one, because to me, this is the important issue. I'm running for the Board of Light and Power. The future of Marquette is based on a sustainable, affordable, adequate energy. The Board of Light and Power have taken steps to do that, okay? The city commission has supported it. The process is moving on. I hope as I get on the Board of Light and Power, we become transparent, we follow the process, the citizens are informed about what's happening. Some people said, well, look at alternatives. Okay, but, you know, the alternatives, what are they? Wind generation, solar? Wind generation, to have a wind generation system in the city of Marquette, you would need 50 propellers out there on our vista for 90 kilowatts, or megawatts, excuse me. If you went into solar, you would have to have solar panels, say, take Hartfield football field, you put solar panels in there, you need 180 football fields with solar panels to produce 96 megawatts. So alternatives have been looked at, alternatives have been studied. The Board of Light and Power have been going to meetings, and they've done a great job of doing that. I asked for a little bit more.
Everybody gets one minute to answer the question.
But these are the issues. The Board of Light and Power is an issue, and we need to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Some people crept into the third question, which is also quite specific, both to the position you're running for, as well as your personality in filling that position, and what are the key challenges to address for the future? And to start with, according to straws, Dave pulled the straw on this one, so Dave, would you please start?
So I would say the key challenge from the aspect of the Board of Light and Power is that we've been dealt a serious situation by the EPA, and the way it looks, you know, it's probably 98% certain Prescott Power Plant is closing somewhere around 2020. It might get a little additional life, but that's a fact. And because of that, something certainly needs to be done, and there are a number of different options. I believe that one of the things that I would like to see us do on the board is take a look at all of those options, including connecting into the transmission system, along with building the generation. The generation plan is an excellent plan, put together by excellent staff, the current board, it's a number of great people, and what I would like to do is continue that and make sure that that is the best plan moving forward, because it is a significant increase.
Time. Thank you. Jerry?
I could continue now. The, and David's brought up a point about the transmission system. There's one line that comes into Marquette County, and that goes directly to Prescott. For us to tap into that line is $20 million. So if we did that, then we're into a system, into the grid, where we have to buy power on the outside and bring it in. Very expensive. UP Power, their monthly bill is $160 a month. Alger Delta, their monthly bill is $130 some dollars. Our bill is going to go up to $78. That includes the new transmission system. That includes this new plant. So we're going to have adequate power to take us into the next generation, but to go outside and start brokering power, as time goes on, power is going to be more expensive, it's going to be more direct. They got nine plants, coal-fired plants downstate, that are going to close. Where are they going to get their power? Outside, they have to buy it and bring it in. Very costly. We'll have our own plant right here in Marquette. Thank you. I got my words.
Thank you, Jerry. John?
I think one of the key challenges, other than having reliable electricity, is making sure we're financially solvent in the future, and I think that could be addressed with annual small increases in electric rates, which probably should have happened over the last 30 years, rather than wait until you're in a financial difficult situation and have a large increase all at once. So I think probably our budget challenge is probably, in the background, is one of the main challenges that should be addressed. And just by having like a 2% to 4% increase each year, would probably make the big sudden increase in rates not feel so large and difficult to deal with, with a lot of people can't afford it all at one time. So I think in the bottom line, I think money always ends up being the bottom line.
Great. Thank you, Ken. I'm going to reiterate the question, just because we do have both Board of Light and Power and City Commission candidates, it's really easy to go down the path of just the Board of Light and Power. Challenges that are ahead. So again, the question is, what are the key challenges that we need to address? Sarah?
I think one of the biggest challenges is that we have less state revenue sharing coming in. Since the early 2000s, we've lost over $6 million. And as costs go up, as our infrastructure ages, those of us that serve in this position, responsible for the finances, are in a really tough position. That's why you've seen things pop up like the Smart Zone, trying to create economic development. But also, when these challenges come up, you know, I'm a big fan of taking a little more time, as well as looking at every alternative. With the recent Board of Light and Power discussion, you know, I'm watching what's going on in Minnesota and looking at their governor, who just announced today that they are going for a 30% renewable energy standard in their government buildings. So they just put out an RFP for solar. They're doing it similar latitude region as us, and so it makes me think that some of those alternatives can happen, and whether it's our infrastructure with water and sewer or electricity, I'd like to explore those.
Thank you. Jason?
Some key issues we had going into this, I had three. Monday, I addressed, obviously, a big one, and I think it's going to be important for the commission to work with the Board of Light and Power in a positive manner going forward, to ensure that that process is handled as well as it can moving forward. Secondly, obviously, we have a major development, a new hospital going in within the city of Marquette to help address rural health care needs. Rural health care is a large problem, and it is a growing problem in a lot of rural communities. I look forward to working with the city commission on ensuring that that process is handled transparently and is handled prudently. I really look forward to spending the time on working with that. Thirdly, or next, I'd like to also make sure that, again, that the continued economic opportunities are available within the city, as was previously mentioned. Let's utilize, again, those positive resources we have here within the community, the Smart Zone, and work with the commission to develop additional opportunities that we can leverage.
Thank you. Meredith?
I think some of the key challenges in Marquette that needs to be addressed would be the ease of access to have residents understand where the tax money is going regarding the hospital. And also, you know, the big issue is the BLP rate increase, and just to be able to fully understand where the money's going and how it's being spent. And I have to admit that I don't know a whole lot right now about the whole BLP issue, but I would certainly look into it more so. I know it's a pretty heated topic with pretty much most everybody here. But, yeah, the key challenge, I would say, is just to make sure that residents know what's going on, and to make sure that they, you know, if they're interested in it, to look into it and not just let somebody decide for them.
Thank you. Mike?
People have done a good job of talking about the key issues. Certainly, the Board of Light and Power issue is a very, very key issue. I firmly believe that we need to have our own power. I agree with Mr. Erby in the sense that we have to be able to set our own rates, we have to be able to generate our own power. How we do that is up to the citizens, and it's going to take a lot of work yet to get that job done. Completing the hospital project is a key project, a key challenge as well. There's a lot of work to be done on that project also. I also agree that we need to have more money come into the city from outside sources. I think we need to get, maybe get a little tougher on Lansing, and certainly a little tougher on Washington, and get some of the money that we send out to come back here and do some things for us. It's our money, and they keep telling us that. It's our money. So I think that's a huge challenge for us, is to find ways to get Lansing to send more money back to us, and find ways to get Washington to send money to us as well, so we can finish these projects. We all know what the projects are. It doesn't matter how are we going to get them done.
Thank you. Ken?
Having worked for the Board of Light and Power, and Randy Yunus, that are down at Shriver Steam Plant, and knowing that they're aging, and as they age, you have to start replacing, and you've got to watch how the city is growing, and we also feed power to both the Chalkley Township and the west side of the township. It's hard to believe that we have grown as much as we have, and I can see in the future where we will be when Upco goes down, a base power source for surrounding areas who will want to buy power from us, and will enhance our income, and hopefully, we will be able to pay off some of the debt a little bit quicker.
Thank you. Now that we've had the chance to hear from each of you on what your vision for the future of Marquette is, and what some of the challenges that are facing us, we would like to know, should you be elected in your elected role, what would you do? Should you not be elected? What would you do as a resident to address these issues? What steps will you take to help personally? And according to the straws being drawn, we start with Ken.
We will be coming up very short. Was there a turn? Down first. We will be starting very short, working on the power system. And if I get elected to the board, one of the things I think that has to be really watched is the meetings. Each and every meeting, as the agenda is put out, it has to be scrutinized so that we make sure we're spending the dollars that are invested and the money that the people are investing into this to make sure we get the best out of it. It's very hard to sit back and look at people who are on low incomes and get a thirty percent increase in their rates. It's, I've seen people, I've talked to people, and believe me, when I hear the hospital going up by a hundred thousand dollars in the different places going up, it's hard, hard to do.
Thank you. Dave?
If I'm elected to the Board of Light and Power, you can be sure that we will be taking a look at all of the options that are available to us. And I know that a lot of that work has been done, but what I don't believe has been done is really taking a serious look at what is the net present value of the various options? What do those options mean in terms of the cost to the ratepayer? It's incumbent upon, it's not so incumbent upon the Board of Light and Power, but it's incumbent upon the City Commission in its role as acting public service commission because of the way municipals are structured, to really look out for that ratepayer. And I think that the Board of Light and Power, we need to take a look at, and I guess for me personally, if I get elected, what I need to do is be sure that this generation plan is in fact the best way to go because there are clearly two options, and there's a lot of others, but clearly two. One is to become part of the interconnected system. The other is the generation plan, and there are two vastly different options, and one is cheaper than the other.
Thank you. Jerry?
The Board of Light and Power serves sixteen thousand customers, wide variety of customers. People who live in their homes, I'm on the Aging Network, people have called me up, very limited income, very concerned about any rate increases, taxes, millage, or whatever. I think we have to be very aware of their problems, address them from the Board of Light and Power, work with our customers and our clients, make sure that they are taken care of. That's very important. But we need a sustainable energy system to create additional jobs, additional construction, growth in Marquette, taking different parts of our city and making it grow, but you have to have a sustainable, accountable system that does that. I intend to monitor it myself, and hopefully down the road, maybe even there could be some reductions in cost. They said that when they made the presentation, and hopefully we can come up with some type of solution to help all our population. Thank you for the red card.
Thank you. John?
I think some of the items would be, we can expand our use of renewable energy as part of the overall energy mix. I don't think the one source, whether it's coal or gas, is going to provide all the power, or it's already some provided from the hydroelectric dam. I think especially solar panels could be utilized on public buildings for a portion of the mix, and also look for energy conservation through LED street lightings or greater incentive with the energy optimization plan. So I mean, it's really, I don't think there's one source for all our needs as much as it is a combination of savings and greater use of lower-cost energy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to reiterate the question for candidates in, it is what will you personally do to work towards that future and tackle those challenges? Sarah?
Well, if I'm elected, I've already been fortunate enough to be elected and appointed serving the city. But if I am elected again, I feel like the biggest concern for me is putting the fiscal responsibility, the taxpayer dollars first. With everything that we look at, we have to make sure we're spending the taxpayer dollars wisely, and I really believe that the public-private partnerships and looking to those businesses in our community, how they're doing, how we can do it better, I think that's important. The biggest financial challenge facing the city residents, I feel, is our water, sewer, and streets. We have an antiquated aging system that we can't replace fast enough, and so that is going to be a big challenge for us, realizing that a lot of those dollars originated from federal or state grants. We haven't been analyzing the total cost of that service, and we're coming up short. So that will be by far, I think, one of the biggest challenges and one of the most important ones I hope to work on.
Thank you. Jason?
If elected to the City Commission, I really look forward to working with the City Commission on providing a little bit of additional diversity to the board, and I think anytime that you increase the diversity to the board, it's going to broaden that discussion. And what that's going to do is to have everyone come together to provide the best decisions possible for the residents of the city of Marquette. I really look forward to leveraging all of the experiences that everyone will bring to that board towards working with utility infrastructures, the hospital, and all of the additional challenges facing the community. Additionally, I really look forward to providing excellent customer service to the residents of the city of Marquette. I think it's very important as an elected member of the commission to make sure that you are talking with the community, you're communicating with them, and you're letting them know that you're listening. You are taking their thoughts and questions into consideration, and you will communicate those. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith?
If I'm elected for the City Commission, I will work very hard and do my homework so that I know all the different sides of the issues that are being presented. And I'm really looking forward to this challenge if I am elected, and working with the fellow commissioners so that we can make great decisions for the residents of Marquette, and definitely try to figure out the best way to deal with taxpayers' money, I think is very important. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
First thing I'm going to do is roll up my sleeves and go to work. I'm asking you to give me a job. I'm asking you to vote for me, and that means that I need to go to work, and that's what I'm going to do. I'm already up on the issues. I already know what's going on. I know what, I know my own mind. And if you know me, you know that this is true, I am my own man. If you don't know me, take my word for it. I'm my own man. If you vote for me, I'll be working for you. I owe nobody anything else, except the voters who vote for me. I will work for you, and I will start the very first day to go to work.
Short and succinct. Thank you. That's the four general questions that we have for you. Other than that, we do have closing comments. We're granting each of you two minutes for closing comments. According to the short drawing of the straw, we would start with Mike and go around the table, and this is open for any topic that's come up or anything else that you think needs to be addressed, so.
Well, I made a comment that if you know me, you know I'm my own man. If you know me, you also know I can talk for a long time about a lot of things, and that's fact. But I also do a lot of thinking, and I'm very, very good at working, and I do want the job. I want to work for you. I want you to give me your vote. I want you to vote me in, but you have to go out and vote. If you don't vote for me, that's fine. A lot of people have given up a lot, and that's men and women, for our right to vote. You can honor them by going out on November third and putting a mark on a ballot. It's great that we have fantastic candidates. We do. I really believe that. We've got eight fantastic candidates here who are going to do a good job. They know what's going on in the community. They're sharp, they're intelligent. You can't go wrong unless you don't vote. If you don't vote, that's wrong. I can't do the job you want me to do unless you vote for me. Nobody else can do the same thing unless you vote for them. You have to go out and vote and get everybody else that you know to go out and vote as well. Be a part of that. If you do that, and you put me on the City Commission, I will do the rest.
Thank you. Ken, closing statements?
Well, in all the time that we've spent, I've heard nothing but good comments, and one thing I'm happy about is that we're, the current Board of Directors out there at Light and Power have come up with a plan. I wasn't quite sure, I enjoyed or wanted to even look at the plan when I first heard about it, but then I got involved and went out to the office, sat down with the director, and he gave me the highlights and some pictures of what to expect, to which I will hold this one here. If anyone would like to look at them when you're complete, this is over, I have three different pictures here that will show you exactly what they plan on doing. It's, when I, it was hard for me to think about thirty percent, but when I look at what they're going to do with it and how they want to try to cut back as we progress down the line, it's important to me to see how soon we will get this thing up and running, be guaranteed market their own power, and not have to worry about it till long after I'm gone, and hopefully this will all work out for the best for the citizens.
Thank you. Closing comments, Dave?
Thank you. I would echo Mike's comments in terms of the well-meaning and intelligent people that are both up here, willing to work for the city of Marquette, and also those that have come before us. I think that the city is extremely fortunate in that people are willing to get involved and, because it's a lot of work. I think the time that is required to be put in to a commission seat, a Board of Light and Power seat, the zoning board, all the different committees, it's a lot of work, and it keeps requiring good people to come out and be willing to do it. I'm extremely interested in serving on the Board of Light and Power to ensure that we have well-priced and secure power into the future, just like those that have come before us. And there is no solution that anyone would advocate that would put the citizens at risk of power outages or anything like that. There are good solutions out there. There's one that we have on the table right now that's been voted in, and it is a good solution. But there's other solutions out there that I firmly believe need to be investigated, and I would like to, if I get onto the board, would like to make sure that we've looked at those solutions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, closing comments?
Our hour and a half is almost up. I'm running for the Board of Light and Power because of the fact that I believe I could be an asset to the process. When you look back in your history and you think, my God, I was in the Air Force, I worked on jet engines, which are turbines, and part of the process is in the Shire's plant where they have turbines, so I guess what goes around comes around. But I know that in talking with the people at the Board of Light and Power, they started this process three years ago. You know, they had consultants come in, they had different people look at their systems. It was a very thought-out process that they ended up with here just a week ago. I believe we have to, again, be a component of education. I believe we have to step out of the office, go into the community, talk with people if they want to get involved with solar, be an educational component that helps them move into something different as far as alternative energy. But it's going to be a process of construction and putting together this power platform. We do not need to be on the grid. We do not need to be out buying power. We don't know what the future is with that. It's very competitive. I think the cost here would be very prohibitive. So I think we're in the right direction. I just want to be a part of the process, and I hope I can ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing comments, John?
There never seems to be enough time to say everything we want to say, but I think overall that there's a lot of possible answers to our future issues that need to be addressed. Working on the Board of Light and Power gives us the opportunity to work for a solution that'll benefit everybody in the city and the local community. I hope to be able to do so. Again, like I said, I was in the military for a long time, and I've been to places in the world where electricity was available and some places where it wasn't, and some places where it was very expensive. So compared to where most people in the world are, we really do have a good quality, reliable electricity, and that's really the lifeblood of the economy overall because without electricity, that's what, you can't really pump water or maintain the other basic utilities. So I just hope that being part of the board will be one facet that finds the overall total solution that can make life better for everybody, really.
Thank you. Closing comments, Sarah?
Okay, I think I'm going to leave it with one sentence, and that is that the city does have a lot of challenges, and perhaps more complex challenges than we've ever had, but we have a lot of opportunities, and so I'm hopeful, and that is what keeps me wanting to be here, running again, putting a considerable amount of time in to work with people that have those innovative solutions. And thanking Jason in the chamber, I mean, there's one example for hosting this and for starting a chamber, something that was missing in our community, and the great things that has done to bring different government bodies together, working together. At Board of Light and Power, we have a great relationship going forward with them, working together. I mean, these are things that have come out of very complex challenges, and they're great opportunities. One thing that the community can't see is the audience, and I'd just like to point out that there are several current and past elected officials sitting there, and I believe they're here because they have that same passion for our community, and they care. They care deeply. Mayor Coines said at our last meeting that he's served with over a hundred commissioners, and when you think about the knowledge base and the differences in where that has put us as a city, that's pretty remarkable. And so whether or not I get elected, I'll probably be back at some point because I do believe this is the most important job we can do for our community.
Thank you. Closing comments, Jason?
Again, you know, to mirror some of the things that Sarah mentioned, thank you to providing us with this opportunity to talk about some of the things that are going on in the community. Thank you to those in the audience that are taking your time to educate yourselves on the candidates that are putting themselves forward to this election next week. And again, thank you to all of those watching on TV and those that will be looking at the media, again, educating yourselves on who's running. It's a very important decision that you have with your vote. I look forward to utilizing a lot of the energy that I have in being a part of this body and pulling Marquette forward. I'm really excited at, again, all the things that have been done, and I look forward to enhancing all of those things. I do have two young sons at home, and I wouldn't take the time away from them and the time away from my family if I didn't feel that this was a critical opportunity and a critical juncture within the city of Marquette right now. I wouldn't be taking that time away from them. That's something I value very highly, and again, I wouldn't be here if I didn't take that time away from them. And again, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that it was important, that I feel that I can offer, from my experience and knowledge, something positive to the City Commission. And again, working towards that future, towards a brighter future for them and for our community as a whole. It's for those reasons and the things that I talked about earlier that I ask you for your vote next week and to come onboard with the commission to work towards all those things, and I greatly appreciate that. As well as to all the candidates as well for your coming forward to work for this opportunity.
Thank you. Meredith, closing comments?
I would also like to say thank you for everybody showing up tonight and allowing me to have this opportunity to let you all know what, at least a little bit, what I'm about and just discuss some of the issues that are at hand. And if elected, I will work very, very hard for you. I do not expect you to work for me. And I will work in the best interest for the residents of the community. And I would like to bring some really great ideas to the table if elected. And I will be pretty darn easy to work with. So I just appreciate the opportunity to be out here. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the public of the Marquette area, I guess in this case specifically, Marquette citizens and residents, and the members of the Chamber of Commerce, we want to thank you all for running. It's not an easy thing to do, and it takes a lot of time, time and energy, not only to run but to serve. So thank you all very, very much for running. I also personally very much appreciate you not turning this into a cage match, to quote Ted Cruz, which I can't believe I'm ever quoting him publicly, but I appreciate you all being very civil towards each other in the concepts that were discussed. I want to encourage the public who's sitting here, as well as the public who will be watching this live, as well as on YouTube when it goes out, to please get out and vote November 3rd. I know that there's not a lot of things that are happening on the larger scale, but politics are local. So please make sure that you get out and vote. Also, for the audience and for the candidates, the Marquette Chamber of Commerce is really honored to be able to put this on. And so we appreciate the thank yous we've received. This is the first one that we've put on. We've had the chance to consult with a number of our members. So if you have any questions or comments about how we may do it better, please let us know. As far as questions and comments, I'm assuming you can find most of the candidates in the book. You've got about five days to be able to reach out to them. So if you have the opportunity, please do so. I assume most of them would welcome any questions and comments in public. So again, on behalf of the residents of the Marquette area and the members of the Chamber of Commerce, thank you all for running, your service, and partaking in the candidate forum.